That all people may be gathered under the banner of the Prince of Peace, as children of one Father, to whom be dominion and glory now and forever. Amen.
Amen.
Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this town the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Before we have the pledge, let me make a quick comment. I've asked Polk Van Zandt to be in essence our town chaplain. From time to time, there have been disasters. He's already been to a couple of calls through the fire department. And while he is a retired clergy, he's not talking about any specific religion. He's just there for someone that, if someone needs to talk to him or just vent a little bit or something, Polk has offered his services. But he is not endorsing or not endorsing any religion. And I just want that clear. He's, in my opinion, doing the town a big service by volunteering to be our town chaplain. Our pledge will be led by Brayden Meeks, an eighth grader at Montegoel Elementary, a contest winner for the Daughters of the American Revolution Annual American History Essay Contest. And Dr. Horton, the principal, said, "We're very proud of Brayden for taking on and entering the DAR, Daughters of Revolution, the essay contest." So Brayden, if you would, lead us in the pledge, please. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and the justice of all.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Brad.
Now I can tell you there was no politic involved. He just happens to be the grandson of Dan Sargent. But he rose on his own merits by winning the contest. Let the record so state, please. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Dory?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
Diane?
Here.
Nate?
Here.
Here. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes submitted of the previous meeting.
I'll make such a motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll say.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes submitted? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any citizens wish to be heard at this time? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Mark Ann Peltier, and I live on, I don't think this is on. Anyways, I'll speak loud. I'm on, I live on Laurel Lake. And I called into the office, as you said, to, at the last meeting, to report that during fog, we can't see the side of the roads. We need more of those reflectors in the middle.
Reflectors?
Yeah, the reflectors in the middle. At one point, David had to get out of the car to see where he was on the road. So we really need that. And the other thing is, I have come across, through a man at my church, AARP gives, what do they call it, grants to communities for making parks and other things. And I was thinking we might try and get a grant to help the park, like maybe add wide swings for seniors or butt fitches for seniors. Nate tells me, I don't think they do a large enough grant to concrete or asphalt for the...
Trail.
Trail. But I would like to see if we can get something going with this. The problem is, March 15 is when the deadline is for this year.
We'll certainly take a look. If not this year, we can look at it for next year. As you know, one thing with grants, they're usually not 100 percent.
Yeah.
So if it's an 80/20, the grant will be for 80 percent. For those that aren't aware, the town has to come up with a 20 percent. When we get closer to our budget time, which granted will be after March, we'll see what we can do for those for the upcoming fiscal year.
Would you like this?
Sure, if you don't need it. I'll take it. Take a look.
I can run it down again.
Thank you. I'll review it, make notes, and get it back to you. But thank you. Any other citizens wish to be heard? Yes, ma'am?
Do you want me to stand?
Sure.
This is my first meeting. So I moved to the area two years ago, love Montegoel and the whole area, Marion County, Grundy County, and surrounding areas. But I'm very concerned. I live on Ridge Road Drive. And I'm very concerned about what is before the planning commission. I know that it came to this hearing at one point, and it's gone back to the planning commission, or do you? But the request to have the zoning changed from, I can't remember if it was C2 or C3, to I-1, I'm not opposed to having an industrial area necessarily in Montegoel. But that is a main thoroughfare, and that is an exit. When people are coming, especially from Chattanooga, that may be the first exit they get off of. And the idea of having ugly containers stacked up there, to me, it's like, we're known more as a resort area. The natural beauty is why people are coming here for tourism. And I just want to voice, my concern and my hope is that you will not allow anything that ugly. Now, a propane business, I can see that would be okay. People expect, you know, a propane business. And you can have probably some type of controls in terms of fencing. But the area idea, and too, is like, that sort of backs up to the Laurel Lake area, too. I don't know how deep that goes, but my main concern is just the natural beauty of the area will be diminished by having...
Understood. Thank you for your comments.
Let's put another one.
And this will come up, I'm sure, at the planning commission meeting,
Right.
which is March 7. I've been in touch with the developer. I'm looking at some other ways to handle that situation. Fencing may or may not be required. I have to quite frankly double-check the ordinances. But I'm sure that it will be as presentable as possible. It's granted, I will grant you that a lot of that type of industry is on that end of town. And just by history, not by any one specific action. I think over the years, it's developed that way. But I'm sure, go ahead, please.
It's a good thing that I'm not the owner of the hotel, or the hearing hall street. I would be horrified. And really and truly, I'm just in dismay that you would even consider it. And I just, you know, I mean, I was very much an activist in my hometown against the spring fencing. But, you know, I've gotten older, and I've sort of relaxed some things. But I did want you to know that I've talked to some people, and they all feel the same way. So hopefully, it's not our overspending.
Well, no, and I will review that with the planning commission.
Okay.
As you may know, Alderman, Sargent, and I are members of the planning commission by definition.
Okay, good.
So we'll take a look at that. Just as an aside, while we have these technical difficulties, I've tasked Nate Wilson to be our audiovisual technician. So if you can't hear, please raise your hand. Hopefully, all the mics will work. You're here for a citizen comment?
I couldn't hear in the back. I wanted to see if we could get this working.
Try this.
But I didn't want to, see if it does work. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I just wanted to ask, the citizens will not be able to make comments after the meetings anymore? Are you going to have, schedule them before the meetings, or what?
Before and after, it's fine with me.
Okay, I just wondered if I might be able to make a comment if it was appropriate afterwards.
Sure, absolutely. Part of the, Mr. Fletcher, while he approaches the podium, the point of the citizens' comments is to get that input. So we want that. Yes, it's on the agenda before. I'm altering the agenda, which you'll see I do when we get to reports, that yes, people can speak during the meeting if it's to the point, or at the end with their general comments. So I want people to express themselves as long as they stay on point and discuss the issues. Grant, please.
Grant Fletcher, I was just wondering if you guys could address the status of the master plan for the city. There's been a lot of talk over the past two or three administrations about a plan that was in place, and it was stopped and started again. And also, if we could address the master plan, kind of what the status is. And then also, is that something that the planning commission is supposed to be working on to develop a master plan? Or is that something that the council does?
I think it would be cooperative effort. I think we certainly need the planning commission input with their zoning regulations and ordinances, as well as the town ordinances. The status of it is, again, it's probably been this way on and off over the years, as you've mentioned, in the formative stages. We need a plan for the town. I had hoped there would be some citizen input. That's why I had a town hall meeting, which was not as well-attended as I had hoped. There'll be other meetings specifically for the general plan to get resident input. There's no need in a few people deciding what's best for Montegoel without citizen input and a real way forward to do whatever needs to be done. But in all honesty, now we're maybe just at step one.
So is there a subcommittee that's, that's kind of been formed to tackle this?
No, to be formed.
Okay. This is, this is something I believe should be prioritized by the city in general, because it has a lot of implications on development moving forward. The planning commission, it gives the planning commission a reason to say yes or no to certain types of developments, even though a developer comes in and checks all the boxes and landscaping and all this other stuff. If it doesn't necessarily fit into the city planning, the city plan and all, then it gives them an opportunity to, to approve or deny those type of requests. And without that, it's, we are, the planning commission is essentially an approval committee right now. So I think, I think it's important to get that, that should be prioritized, so that we can get a plan in front of everybody that's, that we're balancing all new, new developments, new commercial aspects of growth and everything else that's coming into the city. So I would encourage you to prioritize that and, and maybe subcommittee this out to, to a few people that, from the planning commission, from the council, include some community people, and try to tackle that as soon as possible.
That's my intent. It would be a collaborative effort with citizen input. It's their town. What do you want in your town, kind of thing. But we, we will, we'll be working on that. Any other citizen comment? Okay.
Grant, it's, it's on the agenda for the next planning commission meeting, too. So if you want to come up to that, it'll, it'll be discussed.
Okay. Thanks, Nate.
I have no comments. I'll chime in as we move forward. Calendar of events, just so you know, the planning commission meeting is March 7, 6:00 PM, with the workshop at 5:00 PM. Our town meeting of Mayor and Alderman will be March 27. And as you've probably seen, hopefully in Facebook and around, we'll have our Easter egg hunt April 1, here at Harton Park. Okay. Reports, Police Department?
Good afternoon, citizens, the councilmen, councilwomen. Just a few things here. First and foremost, just want to let the citizens of Montegoel know that Monday through Thursday, the PD is open from 9:00 AM to 4:00 AM for the citizens to come in. And if they have any concerns or chats, they can come in. On Fridays, we use that as an administrative day. Basically, that's to reflect on what we did or didn't do for the week and to prepare for next week, okay? The phone number has changed. It is one of the numbers, but only one number. I'm gonna give that out. It's 931-924-4964. So it will be answered. The only way that phone number will not be answered by one of us is if something really happens. So someone is in the PD at all times, okay? Secondly, warmer weather is coming, guys. So with that being said, we're gonna have a lot more cyclists out, we have a lot more runners out, and more children playing. So if we can just be mindful, slow down, watch out for the children, and people on the roadways, that'd be great. You will be seeing more and more activity from us pulling vehicles over because they're speeding. That doesn't mean we're getting speeding tickets. Doesn't mean we're not going to give them speeding tickets. But we're actually gonna make them aware, hey, you know, let's keep the citizens safe. As far as some ongoing cases, we've got a few things working as far as the thefts go. I'm not gonna get into that. But hopefully, we're gonna have several of those solved in the near future. So, but again, I wanted to get this information out about the police department. The citizens are welcome to come to the police department. And actually, I don't know if anyone's ever been in there. So to see what we do and what we don't do, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. So this phone number, that's for non-emergency calls?
Yes, that's non-emergency calls. If someone needs an emergency, obviously, 911. So myself or the assistant chief will be available, like I said, Monday through Thursday from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. One of us, or if not both.
Can you also explain what happens when this town is made up of three counties? If you dial 911, who gets the call? How's it handled?
Yes, I can. So let's say Marion, you're in Marion County, Laurel Lake. So you dial 911. That call's gonna be dispatched immediately to the 911 dispatch center in Marion County. Then they're going to dispatch it to Montegoel, okay? We are then going to reply because it's in the city. So it, it's, it doesn't take long, but that is how it goes. If you're in Grundy County, it's gonna be dispatched to us. So, right here in the city. So, because our 911 dispatch center, they, they run the Montegoel City, and they run Grundy County. Marion County and Franklin County will be dispatched to their 911 centers and then diverted to us.
Is that fire department also?
Yes, that's fire department also.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the Alderman? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you say that number one more time?
I sure can. It's 931-924-4964.
Thank you.
We had that number before, but we just got rid of a few and just used one right now.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Have y'all ever thought about joining Swanee Classifieds to send out notices that we want lots of people to know about?
Yeah, that is a good recommendation, actually.
We can look into that. The Swanee Police Department does it on Swanee Classifieds. We would have it on our Facebook page for the town and the website as well. But we can look into that.
There's a Montegoel Community News site, just, just like Swanee Classifieds as well.
Okay.
But it doesn't come to my email.
Oh, we can help you sign up for it. It's a Google, it's a Google group.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I have started it, didn't you?
Let's stay on the police report. Go ahead.
Speaking of Google, we have updated that. And it's got all individuals that are now currently there listed, and the phone number as well. So, and the correct address. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire Department?
Need a vote? 14 calls today from February. It's kind of a mess right now. We had the big incident yesterday on the interstate with the diesel fuel leak. The Cascade system's been repaired. There was a service guy that come out and repaired it. I don't remember the final number. It was about $2,200, I think, somewhere in that neighborhood. There's still the four bottles that needs to be hydrotested to bring them up to spec. We're about that down the road. The main thing is, we have air for right now in Montegoel. So we formed a training committee within the department. We've got several guys that's interested in chasing their fire commission, that they're commissioned firefighters. And that's like the national level of certification. So that's like the same, you know, that they would offer in New York City. It's, it's, anywhere that there is fire, these guys will be held to that standard. They'll be tested by that standard to the state. So Kevin Gillen's trying to head up a training committee for that. So that's like a huge step. And it's actually all free. I mean, there's nothing that's involved for money. The state, you know, does the testings and the observations for free. And several guys is on board with it. The fire chief's Tahoe's officially out of service. It took a bite, and it's a, we're gonna have a service for it. But right now, I'm riding in the, the city Tahoe. And there's a fellow down there right now putting emergency lighting on it, just trying to get by with it. I know previously, we opted to put 30,000 on a vehicle purchase. I've talked to mayor and would like to withdraw that, put that towards the Cascade system or anything else that may be necessary that's more important right now. Code's enforcement, you guys want to go into that stuff?
Yeah, as long as you're there.
Y'all got any fire department questions, anybody?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What, where are you now with volunteers?
We're about 22 guys. 22 guys and gals, yes. And out of those guys, I think we, most of them have met their qualifications for their certifications for the 64 in their state-recognized classes. And they're getting ready to go to Swanee. They're scheduling training right now in Swanee. So before Swanee was coming to us, now we're gonna go to them for a couple classes.
Has that changed our rating?
Yeah. I can't get the inspector here. He was supposed to be here November the 23rd. And he's put off, about every month he puts us off. So we're ready. So hopefully, it'll bring us down some. Code's enforcement report. AJ's your code's officer now. We've swapped up. I've just done the report for him. AJ's actually helping do some wiring on the vehicle, or he would have been here with us. He's served four violations issued to date. He's been working on a few follow-up items from the last month's agenda. He's trying, he's trying to focus road by road within the town limits. So he's just been out cruising, looking at different odds and ends with the town. You know, jumped up yards, whatever he can see that would be a code's issue, and trying to address it. I mean, that's just kind of keeping him busy and giving him a handle on what's going on within the town. He's been pretty successful on that. We, we had a couple neighbors that was served, and then the other neighbor caught wind of what was going on, so they corrected the problem. You didn't have to serve them. So, I mean, it's working, as long as you stay after. We received picture and inquiry at the commercial signers to the town. That was directed to an email. That's been addressed. I think there was five or seven signs within the town limits that was commercial, that, you know, we typed up letters. And not to go after the, the business owner, but just to, you know, tell them about the, the code's ordinance, I mean, the sign ordinance that we had, Chapter 7. Serve that, just if we could get some corrective action, kind of make it look a little bit better. I believe it's had good response with it. I had a guy come out of Chattanooga today, you know, to, to correct one. There was one, we spoke to, I'm gonna say his name, Mr. Myers. We spoke to Mr. Myers about the Pig the Wiggly sign. And he'd actually had a sign ordered before we, we'd received the complaint. He was trying to correct it. So that sign's been ordered and was in the process of being replaced anyway. So a lot of these folks know it, and they're just trying to keep up with it. Any of the violations that he's served, he creates a file log. So anything that's been served, that if you, you know, we, we've had a neighbor, something that's been served, he's keeping files and case files on all of it. So we can kind of build now an idea of, if you got, I guess, a habitual offender for a code, if that's a thing, you know, we've got a record of it that we can go back and revisit later, and kind of pull it up and see where we're at with it. And then as well, with the community, if you guys says, you know, beat that dead horse to death and nothing's getting done with it, now there's record to show that we that are, we are not doing our jobs. I believe transparency is the way to be with all of you. Any questions on the code side that I may be able to answer? Tony?
Yep. Travis, on the houses over on Winston Avenue, have you ever found any paperwork on why those residents were condemned?
I've not seen anything whatsoever. We dug into Winston Avenue. Are you talking on your end of Winston?
Yeah, there's like three different houses there.
Yes.
You know, I don't think we're making bombs, looking crazy.
That's right.
I mean, you know, I don't know what I'm gonna do.
I, since we had talked before, in the last administration, I've not, I've not spoke anymore on that. And we can look into it if you want to.
Yeah, I would definitely.
Yes.
The point is, they've been condemned, but you know, the yards are just pathetic looking.
Yes.
And you know, just because they've been condemned, doesn't mean they didn't have to clean the yard, is that right?
That's right. Yep. I mean, a condemned house is still, I mean, to me, it should be held by an ordinance, you know, for, for what's, what's, you know, entitled for, for the citizens. But, and I think that one property that you referenced, wasn't it tied up in probate or something? Or was it some court stuff?
Yeah, they said it's tied up in probate, but you know, there's no paperwork on whether the house will be condemned. But where they condemned, they keep them doing the yard work.
That's right.
You know, so.
Well, we'll check into it. We'll revisit that for you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Building inspections, we're going to building inspections. To date, there's been nine building, building permits that's issued, inspected, or attended to within the town. Three commercial site plans have been reviewed. And I've issued two permits for those jobs. I've been in contact back and forth with the onion, and, you know, trying to meet all the criteria and understand that. This is a whole new world for me. So I'm learning and enjoying it. For every permit inspection, there's physical paperwork, the same that I told y'all before on the code stuff. We're making digital copies and digital files to all of this. Deb's our town recorder, so she gets a copy of it. I, I copy her on everything. And if there's any discrepancies, I mean, hopefully, this digital file will be held for, for years to come with the town. We won't have paperwork
Okay.
Just let's stop there. I've got some other things that I'm working on, and I really don't want to go into further detail on them. So there's a couple hot cases in town I'm sure y'all are aware of. But there's some new findings on that. And I'll, I'll report to yous on that later.
Okay. Thank you.
Travis, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
From the fire department. On this Cascade system? We still got a, it's the one we've got still outdated. How much does it, is it gonna cost?
About $52,000 for a 6,000 PSI unit.
And that's what we need?
Yes.
Okay. We've already set aside $30,000 that we were gonna give you for a vehicle, and you're gonna want that toward Cascade, right?
I think that's the highest priority right now, yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, and as I was talking to, to mayor, we're, we're chasing grants. We, we spoke to some grant folks, what, two weeks ago, on, on some block grant?
Yes.
You know, if, if we can use that funding before we use our general funding, I think that'd make smarter sense. If we can, but I mean, we're buying time. We might have a, a significant breakdown again tomorrow, you know, it's, it's 25 years.
So what about this block grant? What about it? Where does it come from? What is it?
Southeastern Tennessee Development. And this is the very preliminary stages. I mean, so we, right now, we're sitting with our hands, you know, tied. We don't know if we're gonna be eligible or not. Everything's been submitted of what we need for the fire department. And they're trying to award to fire departments this, this year, this go-round. So we're kind of just waiting to hear back. Once we hear back, we get all the tees crossed, we'll speculate a lot more on what's going on. But the Cascade was mentioned.
So that was the ARC pre-application, right?
I think it was the ARC, yeah.
Yes.
And when did they give it out, or whatnot?
Right now, we're just kind of creating a wishlist. They've not even opened and said anything until yet. And I, I'm talking to mayor, that's the bad thing.
Right.
You know, we, we want to use that, that funding. But if we break down tomorrow, I mean, we're kind of sitting duck.
So what if this grant takes six months or a year?
Just that it may take two years.
Two years? I think there may be people here tonight that don't know what your Cascade system is.
Cascade system, so when the firefighter's, any kind of IDLH, an immediate danger to life or health, that's the, the smoke atmosphere that they go into. And you may just think when they're going inside of a house fire. But if these guys go on a power fire, anything that involves smoke, they wear an air pack. That air pack, you have, that's high pressure. It's 4,500 pounds of pressure. You have to have a machine to fill those, a, a system. So that Cascade system's ran off of a compressor. It goes into the banks. I told the, the council, but the hydro, the hydro testing on the bottles was, was still faulty. So there's four major bottles that holds air to put into these smaller bottles. These bottles up here are still outdated. And they're gonna probably another thousand dollars to get filled. In order to test those, those have to be taken out of service and sent to Chattanooga. So we're kind of lent by on that. So the good side of it, Swanee, I mean, what was we doing for two or three weeks with the, with the, the main system? And we was having to go to Swanee for every fire call. To fill our bottles, two or three in the morning, we had to go to Swanee. Usually, when you fill those bottles, it's about an hour and a half each bottle to fill. So we'd stay up all night.
Thank you. Parks, Alvin? You, you're up.
I didn't know that was the kind of look that was there, ma'am. All right, guys, we got some baseball information. Last year, I'm proud to say we have, we have eight teams that are playing this year, from the age of 5'6" to 11'12". That's a pretty good spread.
That's great.
That's great. That's a great, great. And we have, also have a travel team. For those that may not know what that is, travel team is, they'll go to Jasper, they'll go to Kimball, South Pittsburgh, Whipple and play. But they're a Montegoal team and that's why they, they travel. They just don't play out here of our in Tracy, you know, so, and we have that team. Maybe one more, but we're not sure yet. And right now, we're waiting on kinda the weather to, uh, give us a little dry in almost fields 'cause it's hard to play when it's so muddy out there. And if you put four wheel on it, trying to drag it, it'd make it much worse. So hopefully y'all see difference in that here in this next coming week. And, uh, I've been asked many times about a start date. When I ask, is, is it gonna be the last of March or the first week in April? Do you do something? I'm not really sure, but that'd be the, that'd be the start, start date. And I think that's about, we'll be working on the concession stand and stuff like that, getting it ready to go. But although the, they're meeting now, I think we have a meeting tomorrow night with all these teams, uh, put the final stamp on it. We'll be ready to go.
What about the lights, Alvin?
Lights are working. Uh, I don't know, it was, it must've been in the box, I needed to hear what happened. But you flip a switch now and all the lights come on, so that's a good thing.
And the fence?
The what?
The fence, didn't it get tore down last year?
No, it's still.
Yeah, I have the, I have the plate, but.
It's, it's, uh.
So that's all good.
Yeah.
So lights are good, scoreboard?
Well, that hasn't been checked yet, so, but if it don't work, we'll just, but I'm sure that's, uh, I wouldn't have been plugged and everything 'cause when I was working on those lights, I didn't want something to maybe short it out. So I could go back and burn, then flip the breaker back on and concession stand and get electricity to it. But I'll find out, let you know, make sure. But I'm, I'm almost positive it works. Signups all complete? They are complete and, uh, we're just, and, and extra signups plus then these, uh, players. And I told these, uh, about eight teams, you've already got a coach. They've got a coach signed to them, getting them started. Your son come down, that's that Montegoal.
Yeah.
We was, uh, getting signatures and he came up to me and said, oh. I said, hey, how you doing? And he said, you doing okay? And I said, hello, you tell me if you're sad?
Yeah.
Yeah, I said, I know your daddy, but I won't tell him the way.
Then he came home and said, that fella knew who I was, I don't know now. He was just tickled to be signed up for baseball.
But he's ready to go, he's ready to go.
Katie, you had something?
What about the banners?
That's gonna be started probably this first next week.
Will you just contact the businesses that have been, had banners in the past?
Yes, uh, is, uh, you're, uh, on the right going towards Swanee?
Yes.
Yes. Well, I was flipping through some of them paperwork, but then my old banner, but that's what we're gonna do, just pull them out, see which ones are good and most of them should be good. You won't have to replace the banner. Then we'll just contact you.
Okay.
And you can tell us, yes, we're going in, well, we'll hang it up. Okay, thank you.
Hundred dollars for a renewal?
Yes.
Hundred and fifty for a new banner?
Hundred and sixty-five.
One sixty-five for a new one?
Yeah, they went up a little bit. And I can't think.
Did you say all teams have a coach now?
Yes.
So we have eight coaches for eight teams?
They were short run and some way it rolled around, they were that much.
Great.
Hey, is that hundred and sixty-five? Is that, I'm assuming these banners are advertising for, for businesses and or something? And does that money go straight to the program?
Yes.
Or what's the, uh, what's the cost of a banner minus the one sixty-five?
Well, I don't know, the guy, uh, uh, who's his name?
Jason.
Jason, he does our banners for us. And, uh, he charges sixty-five dollars and then, uh, to make the banner. And then the hundred dollars is to get put up on the tickets for, for a season, you know? And we put them up, take them down. Then like this year, you didn't have a sign and you wanted one, it cost you a hundred and sixty-five dollars.
A hundred, a hundred dollars of that goes to the program?
Goes to the program. And then if you don't, if you do have a sign, then we just hang it up and pay you a hundred dollars instead of, you know, to replace it. But yeah, a hundred percent of the money of the, well, there's something else out there.
Okay, let me pause here and remind us all how lucky we are to have the police and fire department that we have, a volunteer like Alvin Powell to put this, uh, baseball team together. And you say, well, how do you know he put it together? Because I was told that he went to Montegoal Elementary School and was very successful in signing up those age groups. And the school appreciated you being there. So is that kind of volunteering, that kind of dedicated forces from police and fire? And soon you'll hear from street and utilities. Um, we've been pretty well blessed in this community with the folks we have.
I don't wanna take that off.
No problem.
See, do you have any questions or anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we need to talk about, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah.
No, the other Mr. Wilson. Travis, you wanna start with the utility report, please?
Uh, let's see, you got quite a few items to discuss, so I'll start with the water tank bid opening. So we held a bid opening, uh, last Thursday. Uh, we had good participation, I think there were four bids. Uh, the lowest bid was from G and L, semi-local, uh, a good construction group that, that's good for repairs. That was, uh, I think the price was what?
Three forty-five.
Three forty-five, two hundred, which is lower than expected. I thought it'd be a little higher than that.
That's great.
Very good price. So that will completely redo the city tank, uh, inside and out, paint, sandblast, uh, structural repairs, includes the whole thing, so.
Excuse me for a minute, this is the water tower behind the fire department. There's another water tower, but this is the one behind the fire department.
Yep. Uh, we'll also correct some, uh, ladder repairs, replacement, uh, to get up to speed with OSHA guidelines. And, uh, pretty much re- renew the, the tank, uh, for another, I think, two years or so. So, uh, that, that work will take place this summer. We're still on schedule from the original, uh, schedule that we discussed several months ago. And, um, as soon as that contract is approved, uh, tonight, I'll send the, y'all vote on that.
Well, if you may, can we, are you done with that basic report? 'Cause I can do this now as we go.
Sure.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to have G and L contracting for the price of three hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred dollars of repair as directed by LJA Engineering, uh, the water tank behind the fire department. Is there such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Is that a good price? I mean, I'm going, you know, I don't know how much it costs.
Next one too, it was four hundred and twenty-five. And it went up from there.
Probably for a new one, you're looking at one point two to one point five million. So that will renew that tank, uh, for another fifty years or so. So that's, that's a very good price.
Okay.
So remember, we had budgeted between half, half a million was supposed to be our good number and three quarters was our bad number, so that's great.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those, uh, roll call vote.
Dorrie?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so we can move forward with that and we'll be in touch.
So we will, uh, we'll conform contract documents and get those to the contractor, uh, get that executed. Then we'll set up a, a kickoff meeting, uh, with town staff. And then we'll get a, updated schedule when they plan to start and what the, the construction schedule looks like. So once we get them on board, a pre-construction meeting, then we'll give more details about, uh, those perceived time and when they'll be completed.
Okay.
Sometime this summer, they'll be completed with that.
Thank you, what else?
Uh, we installed, uh, the meters for Tracy City metering. We talked about that a couple of, three months, uh, now. So we installed two of our meters, uh, one gravity meter on our gravity line, one at, uh, the apartments on the pump station. And Tracy City has agreed to install a logger at their, the Mountain Goat Station there. Um, they have not yet done that. They were supposed to have done that two weeks ago. And I talked with their engineer, uh, via email this morning and he said it would be Wednesday. So we have our two meters installed. We can still do subtraction and deduct a volume of what we say is not coming from our side. So now we just need their meter to be installed, catch some of the sweat weather, so now we have the third in place, so.
And that's for sewer?
That is for sewer, that's correct.
Just as a refresher, so you know, we treat the sewerage from Tracy City and charge them. We buy water from Tracy City and they charge us. These meters are part of that overall program. Next case.
So, uh, though, we plan to have those in about thirty days, thirty to forty-five days, thirty days minimum, forty-five days maximum, uh, to get the data that we need. And then we'll come back with a memo to provide the results of what we found.
So these data loggers are giving us hourly data?
One-minute increments.
One-minute data, great.
Yep. Uh, that way we can catch the on-off cycle times of the pumps. Um, if we don't have them in that short intervals, then we miss the cycle times and the flow that it's coming. So we, we try to make them instantaneous as we can, so we catch all the, the flow rate coming from the station, so.
Can you then, you probably catch stormwater pulses with that frequency too?
Uh, well, hopefully there's no stormwater in there, but we're, we are supposing that there is. And so during a rain event, we have a rain gauge installed. And so we'll be able to compare the rainfall data with the flow increases to see how much of that increase is from a standard dry weather, uh, day wastewater production. And then we know how many units are in the apartment, uh, what typical flows might be. And then, you know, how much more are we seeing on the flow meter? And so we'll be able to, to pinpoint better where INI may be coming from.
This is in relation to what we've talked about with Tracy City and the assembly, the INI, the inflow and infiltration. Stormwater gets into our sewer plant and taxes the capacity. So what we're doing is seeing where this stormwater comes from and keep it out of our sewer lines, basically. So that's the INI part that they're discussing. What are the reports?
Uh, segue into that, uh, our CCTV work is almost complete. Uh, speaking of INI, we found a lot of INI in the system. Uh, we found several collapsed pipes, um, at least some pipes that we'll have to, to do an emergency repair on. Uh, and hopefully the town staff may take care of that, uh, to save money. But we are finding a lot of issues in the system, a lot of groundwater, a lot of structural issues. So, um, as soon as we're completed within the next week or two, um, then we will be able to, to gather all the data. Once we get all that from the contractor, put together a memo and present results. And we'll be able to prioritize and, and come back and let you know exactly what we found, how bad it is and some projected cost to repair everything. And then the budget to repair those items will be part of the ARC and ARP monies, which you have already retained through those respective grants. So, uh, we just, we have the ARC money, we, we need to, we're waiting on the ARP funds at this point.
Okay. Any other reports? Because we should, well, do under step, can, can we do a first reading after his step report? Okay. There's an ordinance, um, that Mr. Wilson will explain concerning a step sewerage system for certain locations within the city limits. And we will incorporate that as a first reading tonight after his explanation.
So just to give a brief explanation about the step system, so, uh, there's been some requests for, um, developments that are not conducive to gravity drainage on the sewer side. Um, so the ordinance, uh, that previously the town had in place allowed for that. But what we did is we, uh, specified, um, made it a little bit more detailed about what types of pumps and how things can be installed and a little bit more control over what the town has just because of the rolling terrain that, uh, is here in Montegoal. Um, you know, the gravity or low-pressure systems for sewer is an option. Um, it does cost significantly more than just a gravity. Uh, water flows into a pipe and dumps in there and nobody has to pump it or pay electricity for it or maintain equipment. But when, uh, gravity does not work and you have to pump, then there's always equipment, cost of maintenance, replacement parts and things that go along with that. And so that ordinance has defined some parameters that when those are approved, uh, in situations where it be a development or a single occupancy, that they would adhere to specifications that the town has so that we're all on the same page and we're not buying twenty-nine different pumps and twenty-nine different parts. And, and it just, it will make it easier to maintain and more affordable because those costs are passed along through the rates. And so every rate payer that has those, uh, will, will be responsible to, to be a part of the maintenance agreement and through the maintenance agreement and be a part of the cost.
Up to the individual property owner.
That's correct.
All the related costs.
That's correct.
For how long?
Forever. If it's your property, your system, then it's up to you and subsequent buyers or owners to maintain the system.
I thought the, part of the ordinance was to, um, to make consistent the type of, uh, type of equipment and pumps and things like that that you were buying because the city was gonna be taking those over. Did I, did I just hear that?
No, the, the homeowners will be responsible for a development, let's say, uh, will be responsible to pay for and install the pumps that are needed and approved. And after that, the property owners will be required to maintain those as a restriction, just like any other homeowner restrictions, uh, that goes with the property. So that would be attached to the plan or deed, um, as far as ownership goes. And so whatever property owner, when that property sells, then that transfers with the deed to the next property owner so that that is always maintained, uh, and kept up by the property.
Phrase is it runs with the land. So that's, that's what we're doing. Now, there have been a lot of discussions about the subject. You may have heard that at one time, I personally don't know. I know that as the mayor, the town is not prepared for these type of expenses. So it's up to the developer and the individual owner or whoever's involved that they follow this ordinance if it's passed. There's nothing else to say?
Yes. Is there a specific, um, criteria for the pumping system and everything that everyone will have to abide by? Is it, is it a certain type of system that has to be adhered to per dwelling? I mean, does a city mandate that? Or does, uh, is the, the health department, just like they tell you what to do with a sewer system? Do they mandate that?
So for any, anyone that hooks on to a public sewer system, uh, will, and cannot gravity flow, uh, they will, if approved, will be susceptible or have to abide by the restrictions of a step or grinder system.
Right.
Um, anybody that's out in the county on a subject tank, this does not apply to them because they are not hooked into, to a, to the sewer system that the town operates and owns. So the pumps and the equipment related to that, there will be specific guidelines on the, on the type, the exact brand and pumps that are required, uh, just because they have to perform and be able to perform a function properly to convey sewage to the plant. And so the town will have to say so with what type of pump that is.
Does this, does this ordinance affect any existing grinder pumps or step systems that may be in place? Or do we, do we have any? Do we know?
Yeah.
So there aren't any currently?
There's, there's current grinder systems, I think, that the town maintains currently, um.
But that relationship wouldn't change, this is just going forward?
That's correct, to my understanding, but that might be a question for the attorney. But my, my understanding is that is correct going forward.
Katie? Katie?
So this, this only, does this apply to only new systems? So if there are private, current private pumps or grinder systems, this doesn't affect those?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from the alderman? Any questions from the citizens, Tony?
So you're saying it doesn't affect the existing homes, is that correct?
That's correct. If they're private, privately owned, they're already being privately maintained by that property owner, so nothing would change.
So these, these, uh, grinding stations you putting in, what are they, what kind of voltage you're talking about, two thirty volt, one twenty volt? Because if, if you're putting them in on the initial installation and you have a problem out of one, and then you're specing a certain kind of pump and a motor to go back in there, then that means you're gonna have to spec who works on it. If not, if this last electrician over here comes and installs the pump and a motor, who's gonna be liable for it if something goes south?
The property owner is ultimately responsible.
Why would it be the owner if he's pumping into your system? And you actually own the pipe that's to the pump and, and the, uh, motor?
It's just the, the property owner's responsible for the equipment and the operation of the maintenance.
Well, I, I think I would want to check with my insurance company first before I did one of those, is see if the insurance company was covered if something go bad there.
They, they, they will have the opportunity to have that information upon purchase of that parcel or property, um, so if it's a new development, then they will have that information ahead of them before they purchase that.
So you would have to have a pump, able to pump through a, a three-inch line, is that correct?
That's correct.
So you have, what, less than half, four square pump?
I don't have the specifications, but they're different for grinder pumps or step.
One pump, five foot lift for, you know, a pound per foot, so you'd be, you would be going over what, it's ten foot per inch whenever you're landing the line, so you're talking about what, a total of one foot from a house to a gravity flow line?
Yeah, most, most of these pumps that we're talking about are, uh, made for that type of operation or good for head conditions.
Well, I saw poop pumps before, I'm familiar with a poop pump, I'm just trying to wonder what size.
That's right. So, so if you're familiar with them, you should know that they're good for head conditions from like zero to, to eighty feet of total dynamic head.
Yeah. So, I'm just wondering about the cost, only who's it gonna throw it back on?
It would be the property.
I know they talked about this once before here to the city, but you take a lot of these older houses here, it's got like, a lot of these houses don't even have a two hundred amp, uh, breaker box in them, so their boxes are matched out, so if you come in here and put something else in, that means they've gotta have an electrician to upgrade their electrical service before they can even put a pump on.
Isn't it for existing? I mean, isn't it for new?
It's for new. Existing doesn't apply.
Existing doesn't apply, it's for new construction.
At this point.
Okay, any other questions? Now, do we take the motion to accept? Okay, you have all received in your packets the copy of ordinance zero-three dash two-three, which talks about the step system that we just discussed. I've obtained a motion to accept on the first reading, ordinance number zero-three dash two-three. Is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
Yes.
Make the motion, will there be time for discussion though?
Yeah, I want you to discuss the motion.
I don't feel comfortable voting on it, because I don't know enough about it.
Okay, well, first there's a motion on the floors there, second to the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
I do not feel comfortable voting on it, because I don't know what I'm voting on. You can sit here and tell me about grinder pumps and septic tanks and I don't have a clue. I don't know if the city is gonna have a responsibility of cost, I don't, I don't.
What this is doing is, is taking the responsibility off of the city, so historically that was the case. Historically, a, a developer who had to have a system like this would have to install it, and they would have to warranty it for a certain number of years, and then the town would take it over. And when they got into a conversation with this, the, I think this is mostly related to that development over around Ren's Nest, um, the town said, hey, we want just a couple of pumping stations and everybody to be gravity flow where it can, and the developer said, no, we wanna do an individual step pump at every septic tank. And the town engineer and, and others rightly said, we don't wanna maintain eighty-five different pumping systems. Um, so this, this puts that all on the homeowners, um, so it, it actually takes it off the city.
Just new construction.
And it's just for.
Well, I get that, and I get that we don't want eighty-five grinder pumps over here at the retreat, but what about everywhere else in town? I mean.
So that was a question that I had, and the reason I brought it up for discussion too, so there are a lot of people in town that don't have access to sewer, and this doesn't seem to change that, uh, and I just wanna verify that it's not gonna change for a, a new development that doesn't have access to sewer, how, how's this gonna impact that?
So if the city has a sewer service area inside the s, the city limits or in the past, maybe sewer was, ran out somewhere outside of that for whatever reason, uh, whatever agreement was made in the past, but for the standard, the city has a sewer service area. If someone is within that, inside that sewer service area and they are not able to connect via gravity, then a step system or a low pressure system is a means that the town will allow with certain restrictions and conditions to allow them to have sewer service, whereas someone outside in the county or outside that service area would put a septic tank in if it's a lot or five houses or, nothing changes on that, only inside the sewer service area.
So you'll know you're in the sewer service area if you already paid a sewer charge on your bill, is that how we know that?
If you're in the town limits and there's a vacant lot, and that vacant lot can be served by gravity and it takes a pump to get it there, then you're inside the service area, if sewer touches your property, um, that you're inside.
That's what I was curious about, so sewer has to touch the property, 'cause, like, there's no sewer anywhere near my house, and then I think that's.
Okay, so there's sewer not at your house, it doesn't run down Lane Avenue, so.
It doesn't affect us.
So if it does in the future run down Lane Avenue, am I gonna be, I know I'm gonna be required to hook to it.
Yes.
Then am I gonna be required to buy a grinder pump or whatever?
Only if you're inside the city and for what, whatever reason, extensions are made and it can be, you can be serviced through a gravity sewer, you would not have to buy a pump.
But how would I know that?
Location of your home in relation to the sewer pump?
Mainly this is.
Sewer pump would be right there, my house would be right there, how do I know if I'm gonna have a grinder?
Mainly this is gonna be for developments, like, although it can apply to single occupancy or single lots, that's probably a rare exception, just because this really is gonna, to apply to developments or large developments or semi-large developments that come in and want to divide off parcels and can't, can't attach to the sewer system by gravity, but they could if they were able to pump. And so that's, that's really the applicable situation where this is going to apply. A single occupancy or property is probably not gonna come into play, although it could, but it most likely won't, because if you're not, if you live in the city and you're not hooked up to sewer, you don't have access to it, that's really not gonna change anything, um, because if you extend sewer, then just like a developer, they would have to pay to extend that sewer to get that service.
So, so that might need to be made.
Well, excuse, excuse me, hold on. Are there any other discussion on the motion from the alderman?
I was, I was just curious, do you have a ballpark figure of how many people are on septic and sewer here in town?
No ma'am, I, I don't. And, and they should. I guess sewer customers, you probably have a, a count of the number of sewer.
Around three hundred customers.
Around three hundred.
Okay, any, yes. All right, any other questions from alderman?
Yeah, I have a question about item seven, inspection and related fees. At the last planning commission meeting, there was conversation that there would be a fee tacked on to these folks' bill every month, um, to cover the costs, and it seems like the way this ordinance is now set up, there aren't really any costs to the town, so is there gonna be a fee in addition to shifting the burden of ownership on this?
Well, there could be fees related to, um, the assessment of, of inspection, ensuring that there is no overflows or whatnot at, at places that have these installed. So most of these pumps and the step system may have a light that comes on to indicate if there's a problem or the pump is broken or whatever, and so, uh, ultimately, if it's hooked to the sewer system, then the utility has responsibility to make sure that flow is conveyed and it does not, there's no overflows, so there's still some responsibility from the town to, to oversee or overwatch for those systems that are attached, because they're, um, attached to the sewer system. Similarly, if there's an overflow or backup at a house that has gravity and, and it, it's backed up at the cleanout, then the utility comes and, and, and makes whatever means necessary to, to make that, that blockage go away. So, so similarly, there, there's some oversight, uh, and administrative cost or other minimal type things that may occur in relation to those systems.
So there will be a fee then, the way it's.
There could be a small fee, and so that's again up to the town to, to decide what effort that is, is there a thousand of them that they have to go check, or is there ten? You know, the fee could be fifty cents, it could be ten dollars, it could be, you know, it just depends on what administratively, what the town's costs are to, to maintain or over, overwatch those lots or those, the systems that are in place.
I, I, and I, I'm sorry, I, I see now it says made by resolution, establish a fee, so we're not establishing a fee with this ordinance, so that was, that was my question.
Just give us the power.
Sorry, I saw the.
Any other comments or questions from the alderman? Okay, Grant?
I, I mean, it just seems like it may, and I haven't read the ordinance, but, uh, it seems like it ought to be clarified a little bit more, it sounded a little wishy-washy between this is really for developments, but oh, wait a minute, it might be for individuals. I can tell you, I live in the city limits and I don't have access to sewer, um, and I would love it, but, uh, I, I don't have access to it, so I'm curious if, how, when, if, and I'm curious about the hideaway development, the tiny home community that's coming in behind McDonald's, if, I mean, are they considered inside the envelope, but, you know, two hundred feet down the street is not? I'm, I'm a little, so it seems like it's a little bit, little.
He lives further down Ren's Nest, so if this applies to the development and he wants to get on sewer, then he may need the step system if there's no gravity.
So in, in the case of a, a development, if they want to hook into a sewer, they're within the town's service area, they would be responsible to pay to get to the, the nearest sewer location, so.
What about a single homeowner?
Uh, the same would apply.
So what kind of cost are we talking to a single homeowner?
It depend, it depends on how far you are and.
So like, just take Grant for instance, he's further down than this retreat that's coming in, so we're gonna require this retreat to put these grinder pumps in, okay? Is he gonna be required now that city sewer will be going down that road, am I correct, to the retreat? Is he gonna be required to get onto city sewer now, plus buy a pump?
That would be a pressurized system and they would not be required. Gravity, if gravity is, is by your, comes by or adjacent to or touches your property.
Okay.
Katie?
So is it, if a, if the city extended the pressure system, then do you, um, would a lot owner or, I mean, a homeowner that's not on sewer now, would they be required to connect to sewer?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, the way it reads, or is it only of gravity? So the way it reads right now, if sewer touches your property, you're supposed to connect to sewer.
If gravity.
Gravity, not pressure.
That's correct.
Okay.
Ty, did you have a question?
Yeah, so just a, and it's probably in the ordinance, but I was just wondering if there's provisions made for if your pump goes down and becomes inactive, requires maintenance and for some reason the property owner doesn't take care of that issue, is there, is there a mechanism for timely corrective action at the owner's expense? Because if you've got a large volume, that can be a problem very, that can be, that can be a problem very quickly, a serious problem very quickly, so.
I think within the gr, maintenance agreement, the town would have the right to, just like an unpaid water bill, to shut off water if.
Well, if you shut off somebody's ability across that sewer, then that stuff goes somewhere else and that's a bigger problem.
That's right. It, yeah, and that's, if they don't have water service, they can't produce sewer, so if, if they were, they shut that off.
Oh, you're gonna shut off the water if you don't maintain the.
They have the, they have the mechanism within the ordinance to do that, yes.
I figured there's something there, I was just kinda curious how that would work. All right.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so I have a question. So, uh, the pump that, with the grinder or whatever, so you're just gonna recommend specifications, it's not like you're recommending a brand or a company, that you, everyone has to buy from this company or from this brand, it's just really, it has to have, have the specifications, be able to do a particular job that, that needs to be consistent throughout the community, correct?
It will, there will be some options, but they, there's not a whole lot of industrial type pumps that would do the job, and so we're going to provide a few different types of pumps and brand name pumps that can be chosen from, and that way, if there is a problem or if the town ever had to, or choose to, to step in, then they don't have to have twenty-nine different pumps or parts or that type of thing on hand or, or be familiarized with a lot of different equipment, just in the case that they have to step in, in their oversight, because again, they have responsibility through the state of anyone that is attached to their sewer system, and so there's still some liability on the utility to maintain and ensure that that system is functioning properly, and so as part of that, they'll be requiring specific pumps, brand names, sizes, dependent on the installation location and conditions, they'll be, they may be a different type of pump.
Sounds like a good time to grow the pump business.
Oh, there, there's already a lot of them out there, yes ma'am.
So what is the bottom line as what this is gonna cost the city?
It shouldn't cost the city anything.
Nothing?
That's correct.
Okay, if we don't pass this ordinance, what happens with the retreat? Are they gonna do eighty-five septic tanks? What?
I can't speak for what they would do or not do, but I, I think that just generally speaking, that without a pressure system requirement or a lot, some developments may not materialize, or some parcels may not can be hooked on without the ability to do so through this ordinance. Um, the other ramifications are that utility takes the burden of all of this and they pay for all the cost and all the equipment and have to maintain it and provide staff to, to have the knowledge to maintain the equipment, and so that's why having specific type pumps, um, and not giving a wide variety of those, so that there's one, just a couple single type pumps that the town can be familiar with, and that responsibility's on the homeowner, so that when these pumps do go out or some, there's a problem, then their plumbers or other folks, just like any other type trade, that, that would come and, and work on and maintain those pumps.
Okay. If there are no other questions, oh, I'm sorry, Tony?
Yeah, I have one more question, uh, like on these, these grinder lift stations, Mr. Wilson, would it be a safety issue for hepatitis for people working on these pumps, especially if they're in your yard? You go out and lift the lid off of it because the red light came on where the float didn't work, wouldn't that be a hepatitis issue? That would be safety issue for anyone that's around raw sewerage?
I would.
Ask the man right over there what hepatitis would do to you.
I, I'm sure that anyone in the plumbing. I I'm sure that anyone in the plumbing business would know that at whatever risk or involved working sewage, I'm sure there's a lot of risks.
A homeowner would.
Dorian, to answer your question, right now, if we did not pass this ordinance and that development were built, they would put in, they could put in these systems, and the town would have to assume ownership of all the pumps after two years. So this ordinance keeps us from having to take ownership of all those pumps. That's what our current code says right now. And I've I've been scrolling through the code while people have been talking to, I, so I found the reference to when you have to connect to the sewer for those people that ask. I got to scroll back up to it.
I'm kind of curious as if we pass it or don't pass it, would it stop the retreat? You know, I mean.
City can deny the sewer access.
This is section two oh four of title eighteen. Service is considered available when a public sewer main is located in an easement, right-of-way, road, or public access way which abuts the property. So it doesn't actually say anything, it doesn't make a distinction between a gravity main and a force main.
It's it's gravity.
No, excuse me, that's actually not factual. Whether it's pressure or gravity, the state tends to require you to hook up if you have access to your property. We've had this discussion, MTA's already made a call on this.
So so it is, it is force main or gravity, so to.
Yes.
Are people required to hook up if it passes their property? Because this has come up before, and I, I thought it was one way, but not.
Where public sewer is available, property owners shall, within sixty days after a date of official notice to do so, connect to the public sewer.
Okay.
That's the sentence before the sentence I just read.
If it's available, it has to be.
From official notice. So the town would have to give them official notice. I I know the folks that bought my dad's house, it's on First Street, had access to sewer for years, and it was on a septic tank up until six months ago. But I don't think we, the town, knew to give the homeowners official notice, and I think that's probably what's happening.
It is required to hook up to see sewer. If it runs bad.
Yes. And that's true in most any town, I think.
All right, so we can't stop the development with septic?
Well, you can still try.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. All right, that was accepting the first reading of ordinance number zero three dash twenty-three. There'll be a public hearing, and then there'll be a second reading. Anything else?
Do you have any more questions?
Not that I can think of. We did the tank. Just briefly, there's other work coming that the water and sewer department needs to have done. And as that does come about, we'll have specifications and information drawn by the engineer, and we'll continue to move forward on that. Who had their hand up? Katie?
When's the public hearing and second reading going to be? Okay.
The next, next month, the March meeting? March twenty-seventh, the next mayor and alderman meeting. Okay, John, did you have anything for utilities to add on? Okay, thank you.
I had a question, John.
I'm sorry, there will not be a public hearing. It's not necessary in this. Okay. John, no, you didn't have anything else to report, right? Oh, can you, yes, sure.
Thank you for getting that information. I'd ask more about water and sewer and that sort of thing. My question is, it looks like in January, we bought eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand gallons of water from Tracy City, and it rained a lot. So I'm just curious to know how we make the decision to buy water from Tracy, how we decide how much we buy, and how that happens. So so did we buy that eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand gallons to fix the leak?
Well, no, no. No, we increased the regular flow to counteract the leak, which was repaired. But we were still buying, prior to the leak, obviously, we were still buying water.
So did we buy water from every, from Tracy every month, regardless of whether it's going over the top of Laurel Lake?
Yeah, we do. That's what you were telling me.
And so that's by contract that we have to buy a certain amount or a base amount, or?
No.
That I know, six hundred, one hundred thousand, had nothing to do with that. That's what we buy from Tracy all the time.
So every month, we buy that, regardless of whether Laurel Lake is full?
Yes.
Okay, and is that part of our?
Tracy's line comes from Tracy City to service our customers.
So those are customers who are not even connected to our system?
Yeah, they're connected to our system, but they still have to buy the water to serve.
We have to buy water from Tracy to serve the system, I don't know.
Some are pretty rough.
Yeah.
So they're not, they're not connected, they couldn't get served from our tanks? Okay, all right, all right. And so when when we buy more, when we have a drought, that, when is that, when does that happen? Is that just something that, that they, because I don't remember ever being involved in it as an alderman during the last term. Yeah. Okay, okay, so when the water table at Laurel Lake hits a certain level, then we switch over? Okay, that was, I was just trying to figure out how that worked. Thank you.
Dean, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, previously, when Haley Engineering was was here, the contract, we were buying water from Tracy City at about half the cost it was costing us to produce it at our treatment plant. And by the same flip side of that, in the contract, it states what Tracy City pays Mont Eagle for the treatment of sewage, which was about half the actual cost. And then in that contract, I think you can buy eighteen million gallons a year or something.
Yes.
And then with the, when when the second tank was put in, it alleviated part of the pressure and and volume thing, but but not all. And then it went up towards Clouds Hill Road and and all that. Anyway, all that played into why we buy water from Tracy City. And and at the time then, it was actually cheaper to buy it from Tracy City with water running over the spillway than it was for us to treat it and and send it to the town.
Okay.
And that Tracy City contract is renewed annually, and that's something we're working on and looking into those charges.
Yeah, I think it's it's a, it's coming up in two or three years that you can renegotiate those cost points.
Yes, at its anniversary.
Yes.
Keith, did you have anything?
The lady asked about the reflectors on Laurel Lake Road back when we done our last asphalt. But we ordered, I think in September, we ordered reflectors. It's like everything else, you're having a hard time getting them. I think it was three months, and we finally got half of them. So we're waiting on another. I even called Marion County, and they were having the same problem we were. So we've got a few more. I mean, just the way they're letting us get them down, you know? But we, we have intentions of putting them down. And the past, what, couple, three weeks, we've put down, I think, ten ton of coal migs trying to fix some of the potholes that we have every winter, you know? And and the state, everybody was having the same problem, so we're doing all weekend.
No, I'm, any questions of Keith? Alderman, okay. Any questions from the citizens? Thank you very much, Keith. Appreciate your efforts. Okay. The, let's move on to old business, the second reading of the zoning ordinance for Catherine Street.
I move that we approve on second reading ordinance zero one dash twenty-three.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Dorian?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the next one, second reading under old business is the water tap fee schedule, and that is ordinance zero two dash two three. Is there a motion to accept that ordinance on the second reading?
I'll make that motion to accept ordinance O two dash twenty-three, water charges increased.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Dorian?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, under new business, the, we did that, that was the step system, okay. Did we pass it? Okay, the step system was passed on the first reading today with the second reading, March twenty-seventh. All right, are there any other citizen comments or anything for the good of the order? Well, I know, I'm just reviewing for citizens, so I don't forget them. Okay, alderman, any comments?
I don't have any.
Jessica?
I don't, thank you.
Diane?
I was, had something brought to my attention last week about lighting out on the end of Dixie Lee. Ms. Davenport called me, and I went out that night, actually, and witnessed the lighting. It's lit up pretty good out there. She complains that it's too much lighting.
And I was made aware of that complaint. I checked it out over the weekend. I've been in touch with the property owner who's making efforts in progress along with Sequoia Electric to correct that problem. So the area has to be lit, obviously. It's kind of dark out there. It doesn't have to be lit to shine on people's windows. And action has been taken on one, and I'm sure after further review, there may be a little more action taken. But it is being addressed, and thank you for bringing that.
And what do they do, and are they adjusting?
You can adjust it or point it down. It's downlighting, as you know, as opposed to uplighting, and you want to light the area that you work on, drive on, et cetera. So they're working on that, and it's a question of aiming, and I'm sure it can be adjusted to some degree. Did you have anything? Any other comments from the citizens? And I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I move to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Yeah, don't let that go to second. I'm sure there's no discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries where adjourned. Thank you all very much.